Oh, did you go on?
Oh, really?
You're gonna see it, really, right?
What's that? Lather.
Lather.
Yay!
There she is.
It's huge. Hi, hi, hi!
The top one's over there. The tall one. The little one has cream in it. You might need to dump some out of that. You're on three.
Doctor, how are you?
I'm good.
Yeah, happy to be back and appreciate you.
Hey, same to you.
So it's just taking both of them at the same time?
Oh, is this up to like... Oh, I get it. Like, does this? Oh, it has cream in there. Star Wars thing?
Yeah. We don't want to add a little more. The Star Wars cream is kind of like Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, a little something, something?
I think they put a little.
It's really good, but doesn't like strip.
I don't know. I know Dunkin' Donuts does.
Oh, yeah. I'm good.
They're pretty good.
They're not keto friendly. I'm sorry, Tim.
You were not doing it.
I have coffee all over my house, my carpet.
Peter's with his shirt. He always has a big stain on his shirt every day. But Tommy, I used to go to Hinzel. I used to have a shirt in my office.
Not being taken, coffee doesn't taste good in paper. You gotta have the ceramic.
It doesn't matter, but at least, that's okay.
So I'm sorry for driving with my ceramic cup.
Well, that's, you know what? I hate a lot of, uh, Yeti cup.
Let's keep the recording on.
Do I or Sean, you can, right? Do I?
Is it, is it? No, it's, it's a meeting meeting, is it?
We should have committee meetings. We're so comfortable.
Okay. All right. We'll just call this to order and, uh, do we need a Roca?
Okay.
Roca.
Dr. Brenner?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
And Dr. Burks?
Here.
All right. So, well, can we go to the other stuff?
Nope.
All right. So, yeah, so what we're doing here is a little different than the way we're gonna kind of look at these things. What we're actually gonna do is go through some of the stuff that you're gonna be presenting, correct?
Okay.
Well, I mean, this is, this is the information on our student success. These are the topics that are coming up, correct? So why don't you go...
This is the actual committee meeting.
Right. So we're waiting at the committee meeting. So, um, why don't you tell us, you know, kind of what your thoughts are on this portion? Piece by piece, let's go one at a time. Okay? So we've got the kindergarten through grade eight mathematics research. So let's look at that first and then see if there's anything there that...
No, we're on the base set of...
Are we behind on it? Maybe our... I'm like an animal, carrying on.
That's what you want.
You guys are looking at...
So we're just doing the student success 3.01.
All right. There you go. Yeah, scheduling. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's my thought. Like, we're just gonna... Yeah, yeah. Go over the scheduling.
That was my fault.
I do. I know you're good. I have no doubt about that.
Well, I, I, I wondered if it suggested before, I go, wow, we really filled it out. Okay, so scheduling discussion.
Yeah, so that's really what we want.
That's, that's what we're talking about.
So how do we want to begin? You just wanna...
Well, we can do whatever you like. We can have an open conversation just about scheduling. I know, Dr. Schumacher, you had some questions at the, at the last meeting when we had discussions on, in April. And so Mr. Travis and I took into consideration kind of conversations, the questions that the board had and tried to address them through. And I only have two, two items that are in your orange folders. I have it up here on the screen. And really, what, what we tried to do is just ensure that there was some clarity and understanding the difference between flex mod, or the schedule, or flex mod is just what it's sometimes called, which is what we're doing, and the traditional four by four block schedule as well, just to make sure that, you know, there's some clarity in that. And also, just to understand the why the recommendations coming forward. We believe that this schedule allows for flexibility, allows for choice. It captures instructional minutes. It honors the need for social and emotional student development and also provides time for staff collaboration with the focus on the conflict. Back to kind of those guiding principles that we had presented last time. And so there's just a section, some reading in there that is kind of explaining the difference between that block schedule. In a traditional four by four block schedule, in that style, a student would take four courses in a semester, four year-long courses, and then it would have a semester of four alternative courses, not continuous year-long courses. That is not what this flex mod schedule is. The flex mod schedule allows for different blocks of time, 90 minutes and 48 minutes, but year-long courses can still take place. Okay? So it's not that you're gonna get a semester of math and then have a semester off of math. That's not, that's really not the intent.
Which would happen, which is exactly what happened with the old block. Sometimes two.
You can go your...
You could go, you could go... So we're not doing English course or math.
Well, we have kids also that were finishing their math sophomore year, so then they go to college.
So, but you said that last time.
Just clarity for that. You also, Mr. Travis had mentioned in conversation that a couple of the districts that we have been communicating, communicating with, Batavia, Mountain Park, so we put that in there just for, just for clarity. Their achievements are four cards and then also I had a conversation with their chief academic officer, you know, about their block scheduling. They are a traditional four block. There's, that community's been that way since the 90s and they are not going away from it. Right? And so they, he shared that their sequencing in math was supported by that four block and so they, the way that they sequence algebra, they spread it out over the course of multiple...
Yeah, so they didn't do it where we did it before.
Correct. Yeah, so, so there's, there's some differences, but they were very helpful and thoughtful about, you know, teaching in that 90-minute period because we know we have to be very intentional about that, which leads us to kind of the essential unit and lesson design considerations. And so we've kind of outlined which, which, I'm in agreement, and I think everybody here is in agreement that the quality of the instructional that takes place, whether it's 48 minutes or 90 minutes, has to be engaging, it has to be solid, it has to be sound. I believe our staff can do that, but we need to put some barriers around it to make sure that, that we're accountable to each other and to our students.
So I wanna, I wanna focus in on that comment and Rachel, I wanna bring you and David into this conversation too. This detail and things like that, that's not our issue, right? Here's where we wanna come from. And Rachel, maybe you will appreciate this as well. Making sure everybody understands what this, it's the, it's the operationalizing this.
Yes.
That's the key. What you guys do and you guys know your people and our teachers are, are talented. The issue is, you know, are people prepared? Is it operationalized? What are, what structures are in place to ensure the quality? That's the piece that...
Right.
Because we fell short with the learning and grading plan, people didn't understand it. People never understood four block. We never had structures in place to go in and help four block get to the next level. That's our biggest issue. Isn't what you guys, I mean, in the end, what happens in the classroom is, you know, the magic that everybody has. But how do we set people up for success and then continue to intervene as people do through it? We fall short there. We have fallen short.
Hold on to the PD piece then.
It's not just PD though. It's, it's everything. It's like the whole plan.
And I think that's the key. You made the kind of idea that you feel the futures are ready for it. Well, maybe they are, maybe, you know? But my guess would be yours on that or not. Well, and, and, and the problem with, with that 90-minute piece is certain classes lend themselves very easily to it and certain ones are much more difficult. So it, it...
Exactly, and it shouldn't be flex. That's why I love the...
Yeah, it's the whole idea that it can be flexed. So if you've got a block, let's say, let's just say the English. And it was basic grammar type of block, you know? That's pretty tough, you know, to sit there and listen about grammar for 90 minutes.
I don't even like teaching for 90.
Yeah, so, so are you able to take part of that, part of that English curriculum and put it into a shorter block? And then maybe when it comes to literature and there's more discussion, switch to the 90 block? I mean, to me, that's what we're talking about for flexible.
So that's where the planning, like, and that's where, like, the, you know, that's where kind of the, but it also...
But are we thinking that?
It's a culture of feedback. Like, it, it's a culture of peer to peer and like school community and a community of practice that's constantly helping each other and getting feedback and moving forward.
But are we flexible where we can make those changes? So it, does it, will this allow for...
Well, we have, we have to be. Yeah, so we'll allow for that. That's why we're very hesitant to put together, this is one way to design 90 minutes of instruction because of multiple containers, you can't, you can't really do that, right? You have to allow...
We don't wanna do it. There are thousands of ways to teach these lessons.
What's the essential elements?
All we care about is, is like, because Dr. Himp and I, we can only go back maybe five years, we had some, some faculty members, no longer here with us anymore, flip classroom. And the flip classroom was...
It wasn't.
If there's no flip classroom, it was...
Yeah, it was, there's your problem.
Yeah, so, you know, that's the piece that I think, as long as you guys can show us that those structures are in place, because I, absolutely, who knows what this... And, and it's, again, and I, it might have gotten lost at the meeting a couple of weeks ago. It's not like, and it isn't consistent week to week, day to day. Content, some content is different than other content. They never wanna put our teachers in a box.
Yeah, so that's what I mean, so if you, he had, the teacher has a, a type of lesson that they're going to wanna present some information and then the next step really is for the student to, to investigate it, to look at things, to do some research for that. And, and that's okay, you know, when periodically that's gonna happen. But, and again, just because it's happened before, I guess we're all a little cautious about it, we don't want that to happen every time.
It's having a little bit of the Monday model to enhance. Because kids have issues with pacing. I mean, they're, and Sean, I think this is the issue that, what you're really ultimately concerned about is teaching young learners pacing. College kids are a little bit more mature, but everybody has issue with pacing.
There, there are several issues in my mind when it comes to student learning. And I, I certainly, when I said those comments in the meeting, I wasn't, I didn't mean to be offensive, I was just trying to throw out thoughts and ideas, I mean, um, you know, my, my, we look at these kinds of things here and having coached and talked to so many kids this past spring, you know, I, I, I build a good rapport with my football players. It's not just football stuff. It's, hey, how's school going? How, how are things with the pandemic? What's it like? You know, are you remote? Are you in class? Are you hybrid? What are you doing? And, um, so I get lots and lots of feedback from, from juniors, seniors, a couple of sophomores. And it's, so it's not just Willie this spring that are at the house. It's, it's a lot of kids. And I've, I heard a lot of, not a lot, I shouldn't say a lot, a lot's not correct. I heard a little bit of the second point there, the first two, you know, like, I go, well, what, you know, what's a, what's a 90-minute, you know, what's a class like for you? Well, we, our, our teacher does X, Y, Z and talks for, uh, you know, 40 minutes, 45 minutes. I go, okay, and then you've got, you know, another 45 minutes. So I go, what's going on? Well, the teacher lets us go in the hallway and we're just kinda hanging out. I go, well, aren't you working? Aren't you engaged? Oh, sometimes we do, sometimes we just hang out, sometimes. To me, I was getting more of an impression that it wasn't so much engagement and learning, but more using that time to connect with each other, which is a good thing, right? Like, I think that's a very good thing. That's that emotional, social learning that these kids crave, especially where what we've had over this last year. Um, as an educator standpoint, I think that's good in a lot of ways, but when you're talking about content, obviously that can become problematic. I, I think a lot of, a lot of, a lot of my issue with the, with the 90-minute class in only meaning, well, three days a week include the Wednesday, or 40, whatever minute, probably.
48.
48. Um, I think it, I, I think learning achievement struggles at times. I think students will struggle because they're not getting that daily lesson, that, like, so if they start on a Monday, they may not have that class again until Wednesday, they probably won't have it again for 90 minutes till Friday, correct? So that daily review from Monday to Tuesday, that daily reflection, that process, I think personally, and based on some research that I've seen, not all, because there's no, there's no research in any of this that, you know, says a traditional schedule is better than, than a block or vice versa. Um, but as an educator, I think whenever that daily review and that whole process can happen, I think that's pretty essential.
And absolute feedback.
Right.
Yeah, but then, but, okay.
So you're right, Bob, there, getting back to your point, there are classes where 90-minute class period would be beneficial. At the same time, in, in most classes, I believe, multiple concepts are being taught every day. And I'm not saying they're doubled up necessarily, but multiple concepts in a course are being taught every day. And if you have a student who's struggling with those concepts and then they come back Wednesday or they come back Friday, doesn't it stand to reason that if they're struggling, then they're probably because they're not meeting on Tuesday, for example?
See, I think that's, I think that's a leap, you know? Because if you're struggling and, and, you know, is being there every day for the last time, it's gonna make you struggle less. I mean, I don't know if I would...
I mean, theoretically, I mean...
I mean, reinforcement is good, yeah, I mean, reinforcement is good, but also you're teaching students to be more creative and proactive. So, so part of the idea as you move through high school, and, and granted, maybe as you shift to freshmen through seniors, this may change a little bit, but it seems to make sense to me that the whole idea here is to get them used to it, not meeting every day for a class. Because most classes in the future, no matter what kind they are, whether they be professional, whether they be trade classes, they're not gonna meet every day. Someone will only meet once a week.
I do think the structure though also supports with the office hours, time for kids to get individual supports.
Didn't they have that with access anyway though? Their access derivative?
I also think though, as a teacher, if you see, if I meet in a class on Monday and I see that a student is, that a group of students is struggling or there's a topic that they're struggling at, that also gives me time as a teacher to step out and reflect and look at the formative data and say, is it the skill? Is it the pacing? Is it the, is it the content? Um, you know, and actually, you know, maybe create a new formative for when they walk back in and then, you know, maybe create, okay, if the kids are going, if, if I decide that it's vocabulary, we do this. If I decide that it's analyzing, we do this. And it actually gives the teacher a little bit more time to work with formative.
Agreed. And because the flow is important, right? Like, if you're, you're tidling between independent, like, you're, you know, you know, student center, teacher center, student, and you're titling every day and so the point isn't necessarily how much time.
It's the narrative of the connection. And I would tell you yesterday, the professional and development team worked, they had their work made and they've laid out the initial training that's gonna happen with our staff. And I will tell you, some of the best instructional conversations I've seen the GoPro High School have in a really long time, really talking about teaching and learning and how are we gonna work with our students and ensure that those things that you're concerned about, Sean, we're addressing. And, you know, I think this year is, is certainly this year, right? We understand that, and it's an anomaly. Um, and, and, you know, a lot of things we did, the differentiation of instruction is, is not certainly pronounced because we're, we structured our system that we could continue to move forward even if we lost three teachers out of that core team and we could still keep going if we had subs in the room. So a lot of those, some of the decisions we made was to make sure that we can continually pursue learning. But next year, the narrative is important, beginning, the middle, the end, and how we build that narrative. And even as they were going through this, it's about planning units of instruction, not a lesson.
It matters.
Correct. You're, you're creating a progression of learning that builds this narrative. And I, so I used the example yesterday, it's not just teaching, you know, like a good book. You want chapter one and what's the, all the, what's happening in the beginning that makes sense. At the end, you're like, oh my God, this all makes sense now. Well, this is gonna allow us to do that. And they really were working, and, and all the things that you need to have our students make those deep connections to learning, they're gonna have. And right now, in a shorter blocks of time, a lot of times, learning is kind of segmented so much and then they get seven classes after that. By the time they get in there the next day, it's all like, what did we do yesterday? And so, and, and some of this allows them to deep, deeper, take the concepts deeper and engage our students much more than they are now.
So it will work to do.
Again, if it's not designed properly, it's gonna be bad design, bad design. Whether it's a 10-minute class or it's a 100-minute class, it doesn't really matter.
What's a, Rachel, if you don't mind me asking, what would it be like from a teacher's standpoint to prepare a class that, say, meets on a Tuesday and Thursday and the difference is in preparing for the Wednesday 48 minutes? What does that do for your, your Kansas or your pages, things like that? I mean, I, I've worked with Canvas for years and I gotta tell you, if I had to do pages, I would lose my mind.
Well, that's, there's been some discussion about is there gonna be flexibility for course teams?
Thank you. That's a tough task.
Like, are course teams gonna be allowed to pick the, as long as it's the same and it's all full printed and the parents know, like, is, or is like algebra gonna be able to choose modules whereas English is gonna choose pages? You know, there's benefits. I mean, I don't know where that conversation stands, that's not my purview, but I would say that we plan units. So, um, you know, you sit there with your calendar and you mark out the days, okay, there's testing that day, you know how much time you're even having a day, and so you're, you're planning that unit. Um, so it's not, it's, you're gonna sit there and say, okay, well, you know, it's, we're doing, you might, you might be rearranging the order of things in order to fit that smaller section, but that smaller section might be perfect for, you know, a full 40-minute discussion, you know, a full 40-minute soocratic where, um, you know, or, or crap time or something. So it's, you're, you're gonna have to figure out how, how to do that, but you plan unified, so it's not necessarily just that day, then that day, then that day.
So David and Nick, is that gonna be a discussion what Dr. Schumacher has brought up as far as the autonomy teachers or departments, or purposes are gonna have? Is that being reviewed?
In one of the committees, we have those five committees that are being formed. So we understand and, and Dr. Burks, what you said is certainly with learning rate, we need to think about implementation of this and not just today, get us to start in August, but these committees that we formed, those five committees we showed last time with you guys at the board meeting, those committees will meet all next year. Every one of our staff members will be engaged in this process throughout the next year to continually to see where we are, to refine our work, to make adjustments, because we just, we need to do that process. It's an iterative process, just simply then we just say, here's the plan, execute the plan and, okay, well, let's figure it out at the end of the year. Um, so we have that process. Our LMS, we have a, you know, in the documents that Nick provides you, we have, I think it's...
Learning Management Systems Standards of Practice.
Training Management System. 13 members, we have their, we, the reviewing, all, we're trying to develop standards of practice. And where is the, you know, where can we be loose? Where can we be tight? You know, where does that mean?
Because I would hate for, I think, I think this is your point, I would hate for the, more work to be put on the teacher because of the type of learning management system that they have to use. Like, if they can plan it, but then it takes them an hour to put it on pages. You know, you're gonna get, you're gonna get...
The means, the means not an end. How do we, how do we use it to foster our learning and our instruction in our classroom? And certainly this year was, we standardized the practice because we had to, right? We had to. And certainly, and when you, in the short term, that's what you have to do sometimes, right? To get us through where we are. But we also have to say what are gonna be the standards of our practice, the same, these are consistent across the board, that we can say, the, there has to be some standards of practice, not, we just can't say, well, do whatever you want. And then you guys are right back to where we were, where are we really implementing a learning management system? Are we truly moving in that direction or not? And I think our staff understands that. And they're, and we have a group that's working through that process now, that's gonna be collaborating with our middle school to make sure we're all on the same page. Um, but I do think there are standards of practice that we can agree to that give us some defined autonomy on how we're gonna operate.
Right.
So when will those committees be prepared to bring the board an update?
Uh, we are continuing to work. They meet every Wednesday, they're gonna have pull-out days, so I'm hoping by the end of May we'll have some fairly, their goal, the LMS and the expectation and engagement groups are hoping to have their work done prior to the end of the school year. To at least get forward, you know, the big piece for me is I, I want a feedback lead. I don't want 12, 13 people making decisions for the entire building or the entire...
I agree, yeah, I agree with that.
Because that's, sometimes, you know, that's what we do, you know, we have a committee and then the committee says, well, this, we wanna get the feedback going to our staff to make sure we're getting a lot of feedback back so when we bring forward, you know that the process has been fairly fully vetted and when we make those recommendations...
That was part of my question I had in my head.
And we have to make sure that the progression is aligned for the middle school too. So we, we're not out of...
Sure, of course. Yeah, we just can't...
So with, with that thought in mind, and actually, Rachel, I'd like to come back real quickly, David. So going to your point, I always look at these kinds of issues from basically like three lenses, like as a board member, as a, as a teacher, like I wanna see your view. I mean, yeah, I mean, that, as a teacher, I wanna know, like, is this gonna cause me even greater grief? And I've been through a whole bunch of practice last year, right? Like, more than we can even ever fathom. So how much more work and effort and time, whatever you wanna call it, is gonna put on the teachers' shoulders and effort?
There's always gonna be preparatory, like, well...
Understood.
It doesn't matter, like, there's always gonna be...
I don't disagree at all, but, yeah. So that's an important lens for me personally. And the other one is as a parent, right? I mean, I'm, I'm having one kid leave high school, but in a few more years, I'm gonna have more kids coming. So, couple of questions then that relate back to what you just said, Dave. Um, talking about vetting, has this been vetted through more teachers throughout the high school and the academy other than just the committee members that are on here?
What, which piece of it? The schedule or the learning management piece?
And Nick, if you could scroll up to the, to the common agreements that every committee has, uh, keep going up.
So I'm curious.
And I'll tell you, so each of these committees that we laid out here, keep going, Nick, keep going up. Oh, go down.
I mean, have, have teachers been surveyed about?
This is the, this is the process that each of the groups has to go through. They have to have a feedback lead. There has to be, it can't be, every committee just can't decide and then go, because even when we developed the schedule with our seven members of our transition team schedule group, when we put the recommendation together, I continually remind them, we're just making a recommendation. One, one part of this process, you know, this has to go through our staff, which we've reviewed and, you know, Rachel and I and Megan are building, we've met probably numerous times to go through things and we're trying to like, how does this work? What is, and, and some, some things that we know. So this process, every committee has to go through this process. They have to continually go back through. We post every agenda, every meeting notes is posted on our weekly staff update, that every person is completely transparent. There's nothing that they can't see, that there's not like secret committee work happening and people aren't seeing it. So they know that everything's fully transparent. So we're trying to get the feedback we want as much as we can.
Well, that's very much a good shit and I'm sure this is for the teachers to raise a lot of management.
We're trying to involve everyone in the process.
So then here comes my next lens, and that is a parent. So I, I went back through my notes from 2010, 2011 when I was on the CAC. And I, I was at some meeting, I don't know if it was a CAC meeting or if I'd gone to a school board meeting, no, I know that in my notes it said Ron, he sort of was the principal of the time. Um, and I looked at some of the things that... And I looked at some of the things that were being said, I don't even know what meeting it was, doesn't matter, but I looked at some of my notes, and what I had written about why we were going from a block schedule to a more traditional schedule at that time, and how long it took that process to happen, and all the things that went through to make that happen, you know, talking with teachers, talking with parents, surveying parents, coming out and doing presentations to different groups, whatever. Have we talked to parents about this, have parents surveyed?
Yeah, we've talked to parents. Dr. Schimpf and I hosted a few meetings for secondary, elementary, and all over realms of the schedule. I've also presented to the community advisory council. All right, so this, this has been shared with smaller focus groups.
It wasn't.
There wasn't, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't like a town hall, per se. Right? And that was because we weren't in a finalized state, we were still in the developmental process, the creative, the creative process, we're trying to get more feedback, more input, more lenses to look at things. And so, yeah, that has happened, but not in, like, the scale of the entire community.
I mean, we also have to remember, we did a schedule process, I think, four years ago, right? We did that process, we revised our schedule from the 11-period schedule to the eight-period schedule, and certainly that, and at that, at that time, it was a purpose-driven process. We were trying to support the learning grade thing, we needed some internal structures during the day to make sure we supported our students for that. And it worked very well for us. And we are in a four, you know, an A/B block schedule, it's an 85-minute period, and we know this schedule we're in right now is not going to continue to move forward. And so, for us, part of it is, we have to decide is, what is the, to meet the challenges we have. So, as we laid out this process with Dr. Schimpf and Dr. Botman of what are our priorities, and then certainly what are our needs, this is the schedule that came out. And so, certainly, what I love to do, a multi-year process, sure, we probably should have, however, we are where we are, because we have to, if we go, to me, Sean, I think we do disservice to our community, to our staff, if we just simply replicate what we did this year, or if we simply just go, we're going back to what we did before, because our staff knows there is a ton of things. So, that collaboration time is critical, the advisory, the flex, there's things in that schedule that we need to do in order to continue to get York High School to go in the, in the places it's going to go. And if we don't, then I think we're just going to, we're going to have a lot of challenges. We really, really will have. So, part of it is, is that the design is, again, I love a long process, and we did surveys, we did, it's always wonderful things, but we're not necessarily in that state.
That's why, that's why we're, that's why we're working with the committee. We have, we have a group of educators that came together, had all great old spans, spent a lot of hours, a lot of time, a lot of, we, we did more of internal feedback with the masses. You know, I hosted a couple of different, all-district Zoom calls, I know David and each of the schools did their own. So, I think we did a lot of internal voice and feedback sessions. And I think we, I think they put a lot of time and thought, thought energy and leadership into the work.
And we can remember back to four years ago, we did almost seven community forums, and we had 12 families show up.
Yeah, that's all.
We did a ton of, we didn't get a ton of, like.
This is a glaze over thing, so what happens, most people will just glaze over it when you start talking about it. You're different, because you're an educator.
Dr. Schumacher, I would say too, I wanted to not like this. I wanted, I wanted to look at it and say, why are we changing? Can't we just go back to what we did?
Well, that's a really great question, so.
I don't know what you're saying.
Well, we're going to finish.
Travis, like, what are you about to say? But I looked at it, and I, I thought to myself, this removes so many barriers for students, and this is so, this is, this supports students like no schedule I have ever seen. I, I was in amazement when I saw it, and I was looking through it, and I was like, it breaks so many parts of our contract, I can't even count. And I said, but I don't, I don't think that I could look at this and say, you aren't doing what's best for students, all students. And it's going to cost, you know, some work for teachers, but to that point, I think that's why we want, that's why we want you to be open to the autonomy that you can give them. You know, if they're comfortable with modules versus pages, if they, you know, where are the places that you can offer teachers some autonomy, so the logistics are easier, so that we can have this schedule that is so supportive of students in a time where we don't know what we're going to get? You know, those incoming ninth graders could still be at March of 2020, you know, seventh grade level. And that's fine, we're teachers, we can handle that, but we don't want those logistics to bog us down. But, I mean, I did, I told Mr. Travis, I said, you're like a scheduling savant, I can't even move into this schedule, like, and I wanted to not like it. I did, he knows that I would like to argue something, you know, but.
We're on social stage.
I, I couldn't. I mean, at the end of the day, if something's going to support students, then we have to be willing to make it work. And to meet this schedule, support students, and I know there's going to be changes, and I know there's going to be members that are listening, they're going to say, you know, why? You know, I get it, but at the end of the day, this is to support students. And I understand that parents may be upset, but like, to Dr. Schimpf's point, educators put this together, and we put it together with the stakeholders in this room, and that feedback that, you know, teachers were offered, I mean, Mr. Travis was at, opened, opened all the rooms, said physically come, he held virtual meetings, the YEA said come to us with all the problems, you know, we said, we had essay Q sheets, we had just feedback at every level. And, you know, there are, there are people who don't love it, but I haven't, I haven't heard anyone say, this isn't what's best for students. And at the end of the day, if it supports student learning, then I can get behind it. It's scary, and I fear, you know, what are we going to change for the following year? What are we going to decide? But to go back to what we had, you know, like you said, there are some classes that it'll be great for, and then there are some classes that wouldn't be great for. This software supports for both.
It'll benefit the teachers too.
Yes, that was my, that was my initial reaction. And then, and as I stepped back, I was like, believe me, I was looking for the holes, and there are. But I don't think that those holes aren't things we can't work through, you know?
And I agree with you, Rachel. We agree that we can work through those. I don't know, there's going to be challenges to this process, it's all new, and there's a lot of routines and logistical procedures, and we're going to have to really collaborate as a, as a school and figure out how to work. And building in that collaboration time, to me, was essential for staff. I mean, if, the challenge that they're going to have over the next several years, and we really saw that, we see the initial piece with our freshmen right now, and I've told you guys, how our freshman performance has dropped significantly because of, they went from that pandemic, like, you know, their final quarter of eighth grade year into this freshman year, it's been quite a challenge, and we know that. And so, we need to really continue to work through how we're going to meet the needs of our students as we continue to move through this process over the next several years.
We have to connect to the students, we have to have that time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, when I look at this, after we had it at the meeting, and I've read articles on international systems that are set up, and a lot of them move towards all your school that we're going to have. But if you look at a system like Japan in particular, they go to school a little longer during the day, but they work in modules, and they give the teachers a tremendous amount of autonomy to reach a goal.
And planning.
Correct, and the plan time. And I think that, that's what we, we need to let the leash off the teachers, you know, so, and they're going to come up with good ideas, and so, and between themselves. So, what I was reading is that a lot of these teachers get together, and they talk about what was successful, and how did they build that module, what was most, for different types of children? Because, like, these kids, you know, like, nine, 10 hours a day. So, it seems to me that this is, this is the beginning of a piece that allows for more teacher autonomy, which is very positive for the teacher, because it gives them motivation. And secondly, I think students will have a greater flexibility in reaching a modality that they can deal with, because of the time factor that's involved. So, as, as we move through this, I mean, if we went back to the same thing we were doing before, sure, you know, you could. But then you're going to get the same results you got before, and you're going to have to have a tight leash on teachers too, because you have to have a very structured system, you know, every 48 minutes. So, it, it seems to me this is. Why is that, I don't understand, why do you have to have a tighter leash? Because you don't have, because you don't have time to be creative. In 48 minutes, kid comes into school, they settle down, by the, how many, real instructional minutes do you get in a 48-minute period? Forty, maybe? If you're lucky? So, you know, so now you've got 40 minutes, which, you know, for, for most concepts, if they're difficult at all, it's not a very long time. It doesn't give the kid much chance to give feedback to the teacher, for sure. So, in my mind, expanding that periodically is good. The shorter period could be a discussion period for what was talked about in the longer periods, there's all kinds of possibilities there. But I think time is a factor. It, it's just like being a doctor, and all these companies want you to be done in 10 minutes, you know, 12 minutes, you can't do it. If you want to be successful and do the best for the person you're dealing with, you need some time. What if, to piggyback on your point, with the 90-minute sessions, what if a student misses, what about happens? Isn't that a student done missing twice as much?
Yeah.
And then a problem.
So, well, is it? I mean, you know, so if they're going to miss school, they miss school. Like, none of this is going to be online, I mean, they can't go and look at any of it? And we, we built a lot of, some of the structures to continue that, that work, so I mean, a lot of the work we did this year, it's not like we're just going to throw away. So, you know, we developed asynchronous content throughout this year, because that needed to be tweaked and modified, but they, most of our staff stuck to conceptual development of that, so they didn't develop an entire unit, they developed, they taught a particular concept through asynchronous instruction, and that, we still have that available to us. I mean, there was a challenge, Sean, I mean.
It's definitely a challenge, I mean, I don't think it's a big secret, like, with, with the achievement gaps this year, based on the students who were remote as opposed to the ones who were in person. The latency issues that we've had. I mean, it's been a huge problem this year.
Well, but the gaps aren't, aren't just because they were remote.
Well, I know that, I know.
Right? So, the, the gaps exist probably.
But one of those gaps is happening as this continues to serve as a decline.
And that, there's always challenges with that, and certainly, whether it's 40-minute period, 9-minute period, it's, it's going to be a challenge, we lose instructional time, and instructional time loss is always difficult to regain, so I understand that. I think the piece with us too, with this schedule, is what we did with our schedule is unproductive time in our schedule. So, really, where we were able, the magic that happened here was, we took about 40 minutes a day out of our schedule, and we repurposed it to actively engage instruction or actively engage work with kids versus passing periods, versus, you know, when you have a multi-period day, every period has five minutes of passing, five minutes of passing, five minutes of passing. All that time, we reallocated to give to our teachers, to allow them to have, so we increased the amount of instructional time, we decreased the amount of engaged time, but we did increase the amount of their teaching time, because we just used it more efficiently than we have. So, part of that is, is that, and again, like Rachel said, we, we know we have to do something, we have to do something different in terms of instruction, just because of the challenges we're going to be facing, but we want to move in that direction anyway. So, we're moving in there to, to move that direction, to help our students and our staff.
So, I guess my question is, basically, their last one especially, is, you, you want to move in a direction, would this, ultimately, would this change even have come up if we not had the pandemic?
Yes, it should. It should, and I've been talking about this kind of control all the time. I think it's a way.
I agree.
So, me, Rachel and I were on it, we were pushing, you know, we had a competency group already started.
Yeah.
So, we were working in that, Rachel.
I even asked him if we wanted to continue this year, remember? I was like, can I pick up? And he's like.
So, I mean, we were moving down this direction with our competency group. I mean, we had a competency forum that we were, we were just getting ready to go, we did a couple site visits, we were getting ready to start, and it would have been implemented this, you know, that was our.
It wasn't a space school. I see the middle school people going there in those schools.
Yeah. But we were moving in that direction, that, that was our plan, because this, this model was going to be our competency-based model we were hoping to implement. So, obviously.
It changed.
Yeah. It changed. So, we were moving in this direction.
I think, I don't think we can measure quality by schedule anymore.
Yeah.
And that's why I love this conversation, and Rachel, your point too, I mean, I mean, it depends, I mean, learning is now continuous all the time. And so, that's the problem with the, the school system that was built in 200s, it was structured, it's not structured anymore. And so, you guys are test, you're playing around with it, you're allowed, and what works for one teacher may not work for another, what works for one content area, I mean, you're in the chemistry area, 90 minutes may not be enough.
Right, of course.
So, you're testing it out, and we're getting to a point where learning is fluid.
Well, it's not data dissemination, right?
And it's not guided by a schedule or seat time, and it really is, in allowing teachers to kind of experiment with that, and just, you know, you guys kind of figuring out how you measure those quality indicators, and you'll get data. But it's not through a schedule, we know that.
It's a goal orientation, right? So, you're, you know, you're not sitting up there disseminating data, because if they, if they're not reading it, if you're not engaging them to be able to do some research on their own before they come into that class, you got a problem. Because then you're not going to advance the, the knowledge, right? Because if the teacher in the past hadn't given the knowledge to the student. If that's the model we're still using, we got a problem, because nobody else uses that model anymore at all. You know, here's the data, here's the stuff online, work it, come to the class we're going to talk about.
Yeah, compliance-driven processes or systems are not going to work.
We just have to make sure those standards are there, because I, we, we've talked about this, you know, when we rolled out Blended, we didn't roll out Blended. And we found out this summer that only, you know, 30 people knew Canvas, so we're trusting you guys that you're going to build this, and you're going to make sure. So, Sean, to your point, I know your work, your quality, and that the kid, I mean, just because your schedule gets flexible doesn't mean the rigor has gone down. And I think there's been issues with the Blended model, and we have to just make sure that that rigor is there, you know, and so, and I know you guys will figure that out, but I don't want to get to a point where this summer we came in and we didn't have the Canvas capacity that we thought we had, that we called it Blended, and it wasn't Blended. That, that, I mean, we were caught off guard.
No, and I literally just had this discussion with Nick this week about that, and other people this week, and to circle back to what you said at the beginning, because I wrote down Blended rollout, you know, because I, I did Blended rollout the first, I was the first meeting, and I've said this story many times, I ended up in Kelly Gottes Up, and I was like, I don't understand what I'm supposed to do. And there was no, I said, it's got to be more than just paperless, it's got to be, I don't know how to do that. And years later, it's, like you said, and we, I said to them, people still don't completely understand, they think it's independent work time or whatnot, and I don't think, it's not that they're, that they don't want to do it, it's that they didn't know.
There's, right, there's no clarity.
Our discussions this year, through next engagement committee, through some building committees, through just discussion, has been, you know, student-to-student engagement, student-to-teacher engagement, and student-content engagement. And so, to go back to what you're saying about, like, the rollouts, like, I also didn't want it to come out to say, oh, this is going to be a miracle, and in one year, we're going to have this all down, and it's going to be fantastic, and you're going to be like, great. But I do think that if, if we get some support next year, and the year after, and the year after, to say, how are you engaging student-to-student when they're outside of the classroom? How are you engaging student-to-content when they're outside of the classroom? How are you engaging student-to-teacher? Because I think that's the thing, is that I've heard a lot about student-to-student engagement, but there is an importance of student-to-content engagement, and there's importance to student-to-teacher engagement. And just because they're not having a discussion outside of the classroom, doesn't mean they're And just because they're not having a discussion outside of the classroom, doesn't mean they're not engaging. But if the, if the kids are going out in the classroom in the hallway, they're not engaging at all, then do they not know the objective? Or we not, do we need to pull them back in and have more check-ins with them? You know, like, maybe they were told to go out and engage with the content and they didn't. You know, so how are we gonna teach people to teach them how to do that?
And engagement's the key too. So, this working group, we're very hard to define. First of all, what is our logical definition of engagement? What does that mean? And then, I'm very happy that Rachel was able to articulate it very well. It means that work is continuing. And it's also continuing in the, in the form of Dave's engagement committee that he's working. So, that work is now building and expanding upon what we already done and what we've already decided engagement's gonna be for us. And so, the question is, how are we gonna measure that down the road, right? Like, is, is it being effective? Is it, is it changing our starts on practice? And is it changing what we expect our students to be able to demonstrate to us? And so, that's next steps for that group, which is what they're charged with figuring out.
And I think the part about, for all of us, is operationalizing it takes time, right? We get it. We're gonna do student-to-student engagement. But how it operationalize and how effective it is, takes time for that to evolve. And how do we do that? And how do we keep the conversation going? And that's our, that's our challenge. And that's why we have to keep that together.
It's important to have period-to-period groups that, because that's gonna accelerate, right? If it ran from top down, that's slow.
Yeah.
So, if you have period-to-period groups that these teachers are discussing it among themselves, that makes a big difference. And the students have to be involved in it too.
Exactly.
Because somehow, you know, you've got, you know, a teacher, like any of us, we think we're doing a great job, but the students look at it and say, this is terrible.
Yeah.
So, you know, you need to have the feedback on all ends. It's a constant loop. It isn't like we have this meeting and have feedback.
But again, we also, if we're gonna elicit feedback from students, then we have to, then we also have to listen to it. Because I, you know, I did online, Blended online last summer. You know, and my feedback said they prefer Google, but we use Canvas, you know? So, it's like, how do they feel then when we don't, when a hundred percent of those students didn't like it? You know, so I'm just, we should be careful about.
That's true.
Yeah, I know that.
I agree.
But I also think that there has to be like an accountability piece where, like, I was talking to Nick this week and we talked a little bit too. I said, you know, I was there at the board meeting when you guys discussed all the engagement. And I said, we need to be going back to them. We need to be going back to them and telling them, we need to have check-ins with all the stakeholders involved and saying, here's where we are engagement. Because it took a while to, to, to map out where we were with engagement in this district and a direction to go in. And we haven't really rolled it out to, you know, the teachers. We've talked about it at different committees and, you know, we have to, we have to roll it out.
Yeah. Obviously, the engagement piece is really crucial, absolutely critical to the success of our students. I'm curious, and Rachel, maybe you can address this, I don't know. What do you feel, how will student success, student engagement be impacted, if at all, based on a teacher only being with that student three days a week? Does that help? Does it hurt?
So, I, I think in some ways it helps because I would, I use the example of Thoughtful Classroom. When we did Thoughtful Classroom, I loved Thoughtful Classroom. I still use Thoughtful Classroom. But when every single teacher in every single grade level was doing it for every single lesson, the kids got burnt out. You know, so like, they were like, you know what, Peter, stop with the bow-sand triangle and the Venn diagrams. And I'm like, but they're so good. So, I think that when they're only having, you know, a social studies teacher every other day, you know, or three times a week, they, they're seeing different, their techniques and they're seeing, so they are more likely to engage with you than it being like repetitive, like I'm doing government every single day. Personally, that's what I think.
Help me, thank you. That's good feedback. Help me also understand, Dave, like, the schedule-wise, will it continue? And I just don't know. This is something I wanted to try to explore. Is, the schedule-wise, no, we went to this schedule now primarily to keep half the kids out of school and half the kids in, right?
Their goals keep them in person, right, as long as we-
Right, right, right. So, so we wanna do that. Lunches, for example, in my mind, are, that, those lunch periods are the biggest time where students interact with each other. And, and that social, emotional connection with each other throughout the day, which they haven't had nearly, not even remotely close to what they had in the past, will that come back in the flesh?
So, the lunch office hours is still exactly what it is.
It'll be like-
It's a known one. Things, kids, kids love the lunch office.
Right. Because what about open campus? Because I don't understand that. Is it a traditional, stable, open campus philosophy like we've had this year?
Well, the system of our approaches, obviously, this year, you know, especially with open camp, like, open lunch office hours, you know, because of safety parameters, I can't keep every kid on campus at the same time. If we do, we could have, we run into safety problems. So, but next year, that process will go back to an improvised process. So, the students are being successful because we want, sometimes, as we said, we have to sometimes make some good choices for students. Because if we don't, they, they will make some-
So, you have it as a lose, it's not a fear.
Exactly, right.
It's given to everybody.
But Jeff, you have to, it's an arms process, right? And so, that's the idea is that if you're not doing what you need to be doing, then it's gonna be, you have to pull back.
Yeah, I just, I just, I agree. I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
I, you know, my observation is the way open campus has been this year, especially for the younger kids. I know that they maybe can't drive it or really reach too far off campus. Like, they just quickly come to read over the teacher's center for that connection.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, hang out over there.
Yeah, and I mean, I think we wanna continue to do that and continue to provide kids those opportunities. I mean, I'm a big believer in it and I get it, you know, it's challenging because you got logistic belief. It's, it's not easy to manage. But I think for me, that's part of social, emotional health.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's the biggest part, just making those connections, being together, spending time together, even if you're sitting and having lunch with your friends. Because, you know, I can speak to Will, for example, like, one of his biggest emotional problems is just not being with his friend throughout the day. Like, you've only seen him a couple of times. Hey, I don't know how many football players this, I don't wanna go to school. I'm gonna go remote. My friends aren't even there. Why would I go to school? But they're not even there.
Right, they, you gotta remember, this year, kids are, you know, they're too on, too off.
Yeah.
Next year, they're gonna be in school every day, every day. And that would still help.
Yeah, I mean, we have almost eight hundred students there every day now. We have about four hundred and eighty that are remote.
David, are you guys, Niff, are you guys looking at what blended looks like in this schedule? I was the same. I was different. And we've heard the last couple months, we've talked about this a lot.
Engagement and expectation group.
Just about what blended is, what it isn't at. And so, that's something that, there'll be different recommendations, expectations, that'll be starting next year about what blended is and what it isn't.
The group right now is a good- I mean, we didn't develop our digital framework until year three, right? Because we were, it was, we need to have one classes. And then, we kind of did one classes. And we were like, okay, we need to start with frame or something. And we, you know, so year three was one digital framework. So, I think that's where that team is working on right now. And Rachel sits on that. You're in the engagement and expectation.
And with that digital framework that we developed, we had a two-year process of training, which happened over the course of the course.
So, our professors all followed that.
Full day, P D sessions that were considered and designed for the future. Then it happened.
I think that you have people who are trying to do the right thing.
And they don't.
And so, I, I don't think anyone, but what I've said to them, you know, I didn't understand why board members were concerned about how are students engaging in Blended? I said, because they, they weren't engaging the way that people were expecting them to. On the flip side, sometimes they're engaging and we couldn't even define it. Like, we didn't have that language to say, but they're doing this and it's valuable. And we didn't have that language to, to explain to someone. And so, it was like, okay, well then, have them do discussions or have them do this. It was like, we need more holistic, coming up ahead and show us.
What is your, to your, whatever you gotta call it, your ecosystem?
Right.
And making it really clear about what your ecosystem is. And it's, it's very simple. Yeah, we had this conversation three, two summers ago. And so, that's where, if we have to peel it back and simplify it, I think, we need to do that.
And I, here's where I think with our blended model, that as we rolled it out, as we went through this process, you, I think you hit it on the head. We've been very strategy-based. So, we share strategy. We share techniques. We share technology. We share, and we never really thought about current designs. Like, how do you design the learning? How do you design the experience? And then, the strategies become clearer. You know, a Venn diagram is great as long as it's done at the right point in time.
Sure, you have a blended, like, someone who's a blended champion that is like, has all the bells and whistles and to the nth degree, and you're just stressed out every day.
Exactly, right. It becomes this untenable thing. You're like, oh, yeah, there's no way I have that.
So, what is that work gonna be done? Because going to Sean's point, I am also concerned that kids who are in the blended class are meeting three times a week. Now, in a blended environment versus five days a week in a blended environment, that's, there could be a long duration of, and it could be lack of engagement for a long period of time. So, I guess, when is that, when is this work we're talking about outside of digital framework stuff and all that?
I understand. What I have to explain was that the team is together right now. Engagement and expectations group is going to our blended frameworks right now and deciding what those tenants are gonna be. What adjustments do we need to make? Just like we're having this conversation. And then, that group is gonna be sharing that feedback with Dr. Martin, with the whole, our staff, and what does that look like? Putting our blended teachers together. And the challenge we have too with our blended is the onboarding process. Because blended teachers that are here today may not be here with us by the end of the summer. And then, we hire somebody or we have to make adjustments. And that's been a challenge for us too. That's on the other side of that thing, that how do we ensure that we still teach my kids?
My worry about that, to Tim's point, is that the teachers are exhausted. You know, I just said to Tim, sleep, it doesn't even matter anymore. You know, I've got an entire night in the cover. So, come, you know, May twenty-eighth, they're done, you know? So, and I said, like, I'm not working during July, you know, so like, I'm like, like, if you guys want me to do something in June or August, call me. But July is for cry-acting. So, like, I'm, so I-
You need that for your mentor.
So, to speak to the blended portion, like, when is it gonna get done? I mean, realistically, that's only two more weeks, you know? To me, I think one thing that could potentially help is we have a lot of moving pieces in this district to, to, like, to take a look at all the different moving pieces that we have. You know, Nick and I started talking about, you know, can we combine some committees that we have? Like, what work overlaps and what are our overarching goals? So, we can start to look at, because blended and engagement are two in the same. Like, you're still gonna do like aspects of blended in your classroom. So, all teachers need to know how to engage. You know, so, like, where we need, where are we gonna cut this work and put some of it together? Would be my, would be one of my suggestions. Because you're only gonna get so many teachers that are gonna be willing to do some of this work over the summer.
Well, and some of this stuff, like the technology stuff, can we, can that, there should be, they should be getting help with that. Like, there are things we can take off their plate. And, and there's, Rachel, I love what you're talking about. There are things you should be able to centralize from the middle school and the high school. So, not everybody, you know, everybody's working hard, but not everybody is efficient. So, can you centralize some processes? Can you create some sort of learning center or something that can, that can help, you know? You know, we don't, Sean, we don't let every team do their train, I mean, we, we centralize lots of pieces that takes lots of things off their plate so they can do what they must. And so, I think that's, those discussions are really good discussions to have. And what does that look like for you guys?
Yeah, I think people are starting to wonder, like, well, what's the priority? Because they can't do it all. Like, this year has been proof that we are burnt out. We can't, you know, teachers, staff members can't, can't do it all. We have to pick some priorities.
That was in my notes before.
And that's our work, that's our work at the district level, has to be finished this year, planned for summer, and then to next year.
And that's what I feel, that's what I feel is happening. And so, to, to know this schedule, it helps give us a direction. Because then we can say, all right, this is concrete. We can, we can start looking at what that looks like.
Engagement is not just middle and high school. As you, I mean, for everybody. It's, I mean, our fourth grade needs to be engaged. And what does that look like at a kindergarten or a secondary level?
I think for us, it's just that so many kids are, you know, excited to go to the elementary. And, you know, they're not as excited to learn role models.
And I would just add, as Dave had mentioned, as that work is being done now and started now, there are little consequences to go too far down the road until the schedule's approved, right? And so, we didn't wanna go all the way down the path and then have to, you know, balance and some-
Yeah, and like I said, I, I think what we, at the end of the goal for all of this, the two LMS and A and B and expectation, their goal is to be on our last institute day to be done and with their work, at least their process. And so, we can start then figuring out, well, what's the next step to that? So, we're trying. We're going as fast as we can.
But the framework's gonna happen no matter what, whatever schedule we come up with. Actually, why did it still need to be reviewed?
Yeah, so my point is to-
I understand. And we might for next year, we're trying to get some frameworks and to be as quick as we can.
It didn't get worked on this year because I wasn't timed. I mean, I hope the discussions were happening with the-
Sure.
We're trying, like I said, the goal is to have those frameworks as best, and again, we have a really good group on our engagement and expectations group. And they're, they're not just a day of blended expectation. They're looking at all of our expectations. But, you know, we're going as quickly as we can to get as much of it done as we can before the end of the school.
But I would ask a little, bring Sean's question to the group, one of the committees about the attendance fees. What are we gonna do in the ninety-minute?
So, I actually put that down here. And I said, that, that's actually not a bad point. And so, I had someone, I had a teacher say to me, you know, but when we, when they return, we have twice as much time with them. So, like, if I have a forty-minute period, period, then there's some flexibility. I'm getting students cut up. But in ninety minutes, you're gonna, you're gonna have that much more flexibility.
And you gotta look at both sides of the issue too. It's not just students. What kind of load that puts on you.
Yeah, but I think too that, you know, we always know people are gonna be absent. So, like, what's the plan for them if they're gonna be absent? I mean, we always tell them, like, you know, but I think too, we, we are not, we're no longer, like Dr. Brenner said, we're no longer, teachers no longer stand there and lecture at you, you know, except for what we're doing.
That's true.
So, oftentimes, you do have two or three things going around in the classroom where the teacher's working with that group who was absent or according to their formative, needs a little bit more reteaching, you know? And the rest of the group is doing some, some, you know, I've lost all my teacher words. You know, extra stuff.
Differentiating.
Yes, sounds like a kidnapping.
It's the mass.
Yeah. You know, and then when both groups are, it's down your eyes. I know, it's like, the both groups coming out there, you know, then they're moving forward. Then you move forward. So, you have that time to catch those people up. The other people are moving ahead. And then, you're coming back together and you're moving forward.
Well, you're gonna see this in the board, right?
Sure.
Especially in reading rooms.
So, much.
Yeah, but they're not coming back.
Because I thought that was a-
But you also, but you also have to remember too, we put into our schedule, a hundred and ten minutes a week of flex time that's built into the week. And you also have sixty minutes of office hours built into, or a day. So, you have sixty minutes a day. And you have, or thirty minutes a day for each kid, but fifty, a hundred and ten minutes. You have a hundred, almost a hundred and fifty minutes built into the day to support students in various ranges. So, and that's where some of those structures, we have to create those too.
So, so really, just to, to say, because a couple other questions I had were supports. You know, that time like you just talked about, Dave.
Yeah.
Tutoring, den time, retakes, so on and so forth. Those are the times where all those kinds of things.
Flex time and all that.
Flex time is, counseling is necessary.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, I mean, I obviously haven't had time to look at this, the research here and the different links and the data that you have here with Batavia and Highland Park and other schools. So, that was part of my other question. And when I mentioned, Tim, in the meeting, and I'd like to see more data, that's certainly the kind of data I was really talking about. Like, what were those schools that you had mentioned in the meeting? I think it was four or five.
Highland Park and Batavia.
Yeah.
The Batavias, regardless, their schedule's just different. They have it on Friday.
Like, I, I would like to see, and I think this is what you moved earlier, this stuff is in here. Like, their, their data that compares what they were like before to how they are now, that kind of stuff. Number one, after the scheduling, that's not, that's not-
So, here, here we are, Sean, and maybe, maybe I'm, I'm looking at this differently. This is our district and our teachers and our system. Looking at Batavia data, what is that gonna do for us? What I care about is can our leadership and our teachers build a system that we measure quality and we're always growing? That's key.
Well, I don't disagree.
Going back, so that, I think that needs to be our focus. Because, I mean, at forty-five, David, you've said this multiple times, forty-five minutes of bad instruction or ninety minutes of bad instruction is bad instruction, right?
Sure.
So, it, you know, I think if I were to teach in a forty-five, I don't even know if I could teach in a forty-five because I'm, because I do active, you know, when I do teach, I do a lot of active learning. I could never go back to a forty-five minute because it almost forces me into a lecture situation. So, I think from a board standpoint, making sure that there's clarity at the teacher level, making sure you guys can, you can define quality, making sure you're having those discussions, and then making sure that we're moving forward.
And almost accountable for outcomes.
Yes. I mean, at that point, I think that, that's all, you know, and I, and I love the fact that we've opened it up. You know, and, and I hope one day, you know, we, you know, several years ago, we went to New Hampshire and saw these competency-based models. You know, learning is fluid and constant, you know? There's cafes, there's an IT help desk, there's people out, you know, things are going on all the time. Kids are engaging, teachers are engaging. You know, we're making, you know, whatever that means.
There's steps again.
There's gotta be steps.
And, and that's what I like about what this is. You know, this, this gives you some flexibility where the teacher can take a look at, at a group of children she has. And now, for this group and for this part of the group, I'm gonna set up this nothing for them. And there's some time factors that you have some flexibility in. As time moves forward, and we visited a lot of these schools, there's a lot of flexibility.
Yeah.
There's, there's more. And I think, you know, I would say most professionals always say, well, I want autonomy and flexibility. But they don't want too much.
There's that, there's that.
That is right, right? So, as, you have to move into it, you know? It isn't that they don't want it. But, but, you know, you need to just throw them in the, in the, in the devil and say, hey, you figured it out. So, but, but this, this takes a step to go in that direction. Because from the models we've seen before, what, what happens is, is students take more and more control over their own learning and are guiding their students. And that's where you want them to go. And that's where they need from creating-
And that's where they begin from creating, that's where they can handle a schedule. That's when, when, when they move on from here, they, you're talking to some life skills and wanting to be content here. Like in use. So, so you've gotta take that step, you know? If you, if you always hold them into this tight regimen every single 48 minutes, you know, and again, I mean, we're over how these quality, you've never got 48 minutes.
Right.
Ever, you know, and, and, and then, you know, it, it does kinda force you into a model where you've gotta get a lot of stuff done in this very short period of time. So, and maybe it doesn't have to work that way, but I said, this is what I always did. So then this enables you to, you get a lot of flexibility to a teacher, how to reach a goal. So at the end, as every teacher, because we're comfortable with different modalities, is that teacher has given goals for that group. Based on the performance they have coming in and where they should go and that they just move with that, you know?
Cause you're asking students, some students are gonna work on really quickly, some students don't.
Yeah.
You know, like we're, we're assuming everything again is linear and it's not.
Yeah, well, right now, time's, time's.
And time is like, time is supposed to be quality and it doesn't.
Time is, time is learning is the variable.
But feedback, Sean, to your point, I think your issue is, how do we know that there's feedback and checkpoints going on as people move forward? And that's where the quality comes in.
Just to Bob's point, in theory, that's what we want our kids to do, right?
Not controlled.
Right.
We want them to be like that. But is that the reality? Because just as you said, some students are working hard, those are the overachievers. Those are the ones that are gonna succeed no matter what kinda schedule you put in.
Exactly.
But at the same time, we have the other end of the spectrum who really need that engagement daily. Who really need to reflect and, and review daily.
But see, but you're not teaching them to be better. All you're doing is.
But again, that's a great theory, Bob, that, that's not the reality.
I, I, you know, I think your school feeding them through the school and you, and you have to pull them on and then they're gonna do enough.
You're assuming the 45 minutes that you see them every day is quality.
Yeah, that would be some assumption.
That's an assumption too, like just because they're sitting in front of you and you're asking, you're assuming.
It would be every day, be here every Thursday.
David, can I ask a question about the schedule?
Yes.
What are you, so when we were in the infancy, working with teams here. Um, we had initial conversations and there was an idea about having some sections of Algebra One every day for 45 minutes. Some sections of Algebra One, nine, like it is now, going to your point. Why, why didn't that come to fruition?
Um, it ended up being an absolute, I, I would try to do, I, I didn't, I can show you the choice. I can show you the original version, I mean, I, I tried to figure it out. And we, Tim Marsop is really booked this too. And we, we, it would have been, here's what would have happened. Because our teachers don't just teach one class, what could happen is the schedule for five classes. I could be teaching 48 minutes, Algebra One every day, and then I have classes 90, 48, 90. We, we realized that we were gonna create almost, probably five different preps. Even if you taught the same exact class, if you put them right next to each other. It just, it was, and I, and.
Cause I wanted that choice for kids.
Yeah, I tried.
Some kids want five days a week, they try it, go for it.
Sure.
Couldn't you have though, like, at the higher level, we, we're coming to puddles, like pretty puddles? Couldn't we have, I mean, couldn't we have these puddles that have, so to your point? There's, they always know that for these certain, you know, and not killer classes, right? That there's these informal puddles happening.
Correct, and that's kinda where our competency base, and, and I think to get us to there someday, is we have to kinda go almost like. Cause we were, in our competency base, we were talking more of the school within the school. So you would move cohorts of kids and, and they can have different kind of ex, those experiences. Because you treat them like their own school and then you schedule them as a school versus treating it as. And, and that's, when I was at, uh, in District 88, we did, we're small learning communities and that's how we tried to run it. But we tried to, we had to move from this cohort to a kid. And for us to make that leap to next year would have been. Rachel would have been supportive.
I think we're taking, no, I'm not.
Rachel would be supportive of our schedule.
But I think we're also, we're also listening to those conversations. And I think we're coming back with smaller solutions. So we're saying things like, we're putting, we put together the social studies course that's project-based learning. And stuff like that gets us closer to those goals because the students aren't then learning how to learn differently, you know? And proposed an inquiry-based course, you know? And, uh, you know, we'll see where that goes, you know, like there's different, but we're, we are proposing different courses and we are trying different learning. Because that's all that it goes to those goals. And this flexible schedule is something that is going to contribute to the logistical portion of getting us to those goals when the students get used to it. So I think we're just, we're just trying to move forward and.
Now, when we think about the priorities for next year, it's, it's, at the K8, a continuation review of the schedules. Of how we can, um, continue to expand those schedules to incorporate more student learning experiences. At the K8 level, we're gonna be looking at the creation of interdisciplinary unit by the end of the school year. So we start to follow school year, all, all schools, all grade levels. And the PD behind that and units develop. The, the third is engagement across the district. Um, and then our CBL, which is tied to all that work, will start up again. And then Evolution 115. So we think about, and all those things are connected, engagement, interdisciplinary units. And in the scheduling piece, those are all connected, it's continuation of what we're working on. And then our Evolution 115, that's space to support P of the work that we're doing. And then our council DMC.
Yes, correct.
That is, when I think about priorities for next year, that's it. There's nothing new coming out, I'm not looking, but what factors then in each of those areas across the grade levels?
I just have, I know we've covered a lot. And I, I certainly, from my standpoint, I have a lot more reading and.
Sure.
Exploration, discovery.
Sure.
With this research. And I actually just think almost explaining kinda how this is put together, just so you have some context of that. And the timeline which we did it. So when, when we started this scheduling, particularly at the high school, we didn't have a, a set destination that we had described. We didn't know where we were gonna go. And so what we did is we provided preliminary research and articles that were, that were intended to inspire creativity and thought. So we can do, to land on our own unique District 115's guess. So that's what's, what you see upfront, that's how that was used. The other research is coming out of David's professional development groups. And this is the research that they are using then to design and drive our own professional development needs, uh, within, within. Um, I will say, Sean, this is a lot. Oh, yeah. But if you do have some time, this website, um, called Unlocking Time, that's, that's.
It's really good.
That's. It's really good and it has a very clear kinda description of all the multiple schedules.
You hit schedule library.
Yeah.
Schedule library.
Schedule library, huh? And this will show you traditional versus four block, versus A B blocks, versus rotate. I mean, and it just, it's very simple and it gives you an idea. And so, and so when I say like, we didn't know where we were gonna go when we started.
Right, right.
That's why we started with exploratory research.
Yeah, can I just say something? Yeah. This is your job, this is not ours. So we can research is all we want and, and learn a little bit about it, I think that's great to do. But actually deciding is what you're coming up with, a good design or a bad design, just based on personal research, is not necessarily a good idea. Okay, so you, the big, big thing is we're setting up feedback loops to see if we're successful.
Yep.
Right? And, and that's what you're doing.
Yep.
And that's what'll make the difference in the end, right? So we can say, oh, we like that, we don't like that, but that's not our job.
And we provided this because it was asked.
Oh, no, 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 I, no, that can be wrong.
Well, and then knowing that, like you see, like, again, it goes back to what I just said about eight or 10 minutes ago. You guys setting up these, whatever they are, indicators or whatever, and then having the ability to find. You may get into November and say, you know, this is working and this isn't working, we're gonna get it here. That's what, that's awesome.
That's the idea.
That's the idea.
So if you need a change, fine, you know? So no, I appreciate that you gave us the information because it is interesting reading, I've read a lot on the polls. Some, some make sense to me, some follow. But I'm not gonna come to you and say, you know, I read this article and I think you ought to do this. You know, cause that's not my position at all. So our position is to say, you're, you come to us with, with a very cogent plan here. And, and I think, you know, Tim lays out, this is the, this is the, the priorities within this plan. And now we say, okay, you know, why don't we say no? I mean, why are we gonna come up with a read that's gonna tell you, no, you shouldn't do that? So, so you, you're gonna come up with this plan, you're gonna set up these feedback loops and we're gonna see where things go. I mean, that's all you can do. You can't, you can't make it, it's not gonna be perfect no matter what you do. So you're gonna find holes in it as you go through it and you're gonna be flexible and this allows you to be flexible. And that's what I like about traditional.
Isn't Batavia four, on a four-by-four traditional?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, and if you look at their map in the LA, they're certainly outperforming us and they're on the four-by-four.
And. Swear by it. I mean, when I talk to your social course, it's.
So it's, it's different than what we're going to and it's going back when we talk about how it's advantageous for us.
Right.
Um, Highland Park, we compare our resources and what they're doing outside of their schedule, it's different too. I mean, they're just, it's just hard to, I mean, you can look at the top 30 performing school districts in the state and they're all gonna have different schedules.
There's a lot of different reasons why. So, so districts perform highly for a lot of reasons. Our research has, it depends on the socioeconomic issue with the kids, right? Depends on how much money their parents have, how much, how much they value education. You know, and, and it's different, you know? We have bright parents in this district, but they have different values of education and nurture. So, you know, if you're, if you're in Deerfield or whatever, you know, it's a big difference. So, you know, you, you try to educate your constituents to say, you know, these things are important. And, and you, and you're giving them a framework to work with. So I, I, I don't see where, you know, if I look at, you know, Nutrier and say, you know, well, you should do this. Well, yeah, if you get $30 million in the bank, I'm just gonna spend it. There's some things I can do, like, you know?
Oh, yeah, of course. I mean, one of the.
But, but we don't need to just, just replication in itself doesn't change.
No, I, I love the fact that you guys took what you needed to do and your committees and our teachers made your own. Cause that's what they're supposed to do.
That's what they're supposed to do.
The black scheduling was like lemmings.
Right.
Like all of a sudden, somebody came up with black scheduling and then everybody went to black scheduling. They didn't even know why we were doing black scheduling. But you know, when we got off black scheduling, it did kinda impact some of our, um, sciences. Because they lost that lab time and.
Even now with the assessment, I'm assuming as a teacher and a student, it's hard to get through, whether it's world geography or it's a math assessment. That's a, that's a pretty short timeframe to get through the assessment.
Yep.
And 40 something, that's how time can be going.
Yeah.
We had a couple of.
And I didn't move a assessment.
We had a couple of them, I think, out of a lot of our tests.
Right, right.
For that process, because they literally didn't have enough time to.
Yeah.
To do that.
We're really, you're scaffolding, you want to take them to much deeper levels of thinking and, and cognitive engagement. And that's, it's really hard to get through. But then there's times you need that short cycle. And I, I like the balance of, of a larger and a, and what they call skinny, large and skinny blocks of time. And, and, and again, we tried to, to do all of it and, um, you know, the trade, the, the cost benefit just wasn't there. And I, the, the piece for me, the, probably for me, and I, you know, this is my 12th year being a principal. And, and I will tell you, it took me a long time to finally figure this out as a principal. But, um, you know, we've empowered and gave a ton of voice to our staff. And, and it doesn't make it easier. It's, it makes it, it's, it's a, it's not as clean and it's, and it's challenging. It can be, it's messy work, right? And I think for us, you know, we have 70 staff members that are engaged and are actively engaged, volunteered to do this and be part of this process. At the end of the year, that this has been one of the hardest years they've ever done and our staff still wants to be part of it. So it shows they're invested in the process. Um, the design piece that you guys identified, that was our, our mistaken one. We, we talked about strategy and what it was instead of, we were talking about the design of it and truly what, what, what was it about? And I think once we have those conversations with our staff, Rachel, we get, I think we're gonna see a much different outcome. Cause they, they wanna do great work, they all wanna do great things. So I think for us, this is gonna be a good process, is it gonna be messy? Some things are gonna go like, well, it's a pretty bad idea. But I think it's gonna, by and large, we're gonna get to where we wanna go with our kids. I mean, I, I'm trying to.
I mean, if they, if they know when they lock out of the door on May 28th, that this is the class that they're teaching and this is the schedule that they have. You're gonna see them come, you know, it, they'll, they'll be like. It's the unknown right now that is, that is stressing everyone out, that, you know, they, they don't know what their schedule's gonna look like. They wanna be able to plan, they wanna be able to look at those dates. AP wants to get those dates on the calendar and plan out, you know? I mean, that's just how they operate. So they just wanna know and then they wanna be able to say, okay, I think.
Certainly it's something.
Well, you, you have to have a starting point, right? So, so this is your starting point. But as you just mentioned, creativity is missing. So as time goes on, some of these things will change, I'm sure. You know, because of the discussions and the feedback between all, all the stakeholders.
Yep.
And that's fine. You know, if, if we would criticize you because in later in the fall, you say, you know, this part didn't work, you should do this instead. That, that'd be a problem for us, we should not be doing that. You know, all, you know, you come up with a better idea. And that, that's learning, that, that, you're learning too. So it, it's, it's all part of it. And I, and I feel that sometimes we lose track of what we're really trying to accomplish. You know, we're really trying to get kids to be creative, trying to get them to be good members of society and we're trying to teach them interdisciplinary thought. You know, that, that's, by the time you get out of here, that's what we want them to do.
Exactly.
You know, if we say, okay, you learned some algebra, you learned some machine, you learned some of that, that.
And, and just like the type of pops, we wanna create an experience. And, and the schedule itself is, is, is a schedule. But the experience we create with the, the opportunities and the dividend, that's what kids are gonna remember. That's the, the part they remember when they leave regular high school and go on to great things in, in life. What experiences did we create for them? Uh, whether that's in our world geography class or is that project legal way or whatever class it is, we want them to have an experience. And, and that experience leads them to great things in that, in that virtual. So that's our goal.
No question.
Now, Sean, I wanna go back to, and I know your issue is pacing. And I agree, I mean, we're, and the pacing at, you know, the one that at the middle school looks different than the one that at the high school. It has to, because pacing, like, some learners are mature, can handle it and independent and some aren't. And I think as long as David and Lisa and everyone's teams create structures that are tracking that and, and meeting students where they're at. I think as a board, we have to let them do that.
Well, I mean, that's a really great point. And I don't disagree with pacing as a huge aspect. Let me, I, I got one solicited email based on my comments that appeared in the web from, from me. This is from a, from a parent who is, says she's the longest-running member of the CAC since Dr. Wakeley was. She says here in this email, uh, that, you know, she, she's concerned about this schedule change primarily because her son's a senior. And he misses having classes every day, misses the relationships with, with his teacher and with his peers every day. He's an honor student, he's still struggling to stay equipped for so long in 90-minute classes. I have fair phrases, I'm sorry. He said, she says, college students are expected to sit for 90 minutes, but I think it's unrealistic to expect a 14-year-old high school freshman. And that's to your point, and because pacing is different based on maturity levels and social emotional levels of every kid, right? So she makes this point, and they should not be held to the same standards as this 19-year-old college student. Um, so she says, in our past CAC meetings, the topic of black scheduling has been, and that with great concern and frustration from the majority of parents on the council. Um, and, you know, she's questioning why we need this change when, um.
Because we weren't getting where we were supposed to go.
Understood, I, I understand it.
So, I mean, I understand, I understand their experience with black scheduling. Because they had a bad experience. And, and I, and I.
Yeah, 28.
It's always difficult to overcome a bad experience, right? So, but what are you gonna do, say, well, we won't do it? Well, so, so I mean.
To her point, she says, um, I'm using this opportunity to ask that we continue to challenge this issue on behalf of our kids and families. Because if this is happening to my child, it's probably happening to many, many others.
And see, if you're not as, like, no one should be tracking and having a tie-up, having any student, any level sit for 90 minutes. I mean, we're all, we're all, we're all right, we're still joking, that's right.
I'll go back to, I'll go back to when I, and Dr. Burks, you were right on, you said years ago, we all did the block. When I taught in a block, and I taught freshmen and I taught seniors. I mean, but the freshman I taught for 90 minutes, we weren't sitting there, and I didn't lecture kids for 90 minutes. We did project-based, problem-based learning. I didn't give one written, it was all about active engagement. It wasn't about, if kids are not engaged, they're going to be poor. It's no different than a P E teacher just rolls out a basketball and says, go play, go play basketball. And kids are like, I'm not playing. I mean, if there's no structures, if there's no design, it's going to be, it's going to be flawed. As Rachel described, we don't want to just do direct instruction, we want to talk about project-based learning, problem-based learning. We want, that's what our, that's what we're given as a ground to do, is engage with kids, and that's what they want. They want to go fast.
But I think that's a good point.
Of course they do.
I think that's a good point, and I think that one of my concerns with the schedule came up too was, I don't want behavior issues to turn into disciplinary issues. And we've had talks about this, I said, you know, we teach, if they can't analyze, we teach them how to analyze. If they can't write, we teach them how to write. If they can't behave, we punish. And I think it should be, if they can't behave, we teach them how. So I think this is going to be an opportunity for us to show them a different structure and to teach teachers how to, you know, de-escalate situations, and because you're going to have kids who are, I mean, that's just realistic. So as they see different types of engagement, and we push engagement forward to say, it doesn't, active engagement isn't always, yes, it's power-based learning, project-based learning, inquiry, but it's also writing, you know? But we have to show them how to do that. I think that we have an opportunity to help teach those kids how to sit for 90 minutes. Because I'll tell you what, when they take that ACT or the SAT, it's a miracle, they all can sit there and do it. You know, they can do it. So they do it. And we all look at them like, you're all anti in our class, but you're sitting here completely, you know, not moving for the entire period. So they can do it, but I think it's a learning curve for them, and I think that's a learning curve for teachers.
Sean, so as these working groups, you know, the last bold point is establish a routine evaluation process. So I will make sure, we will make sure that these working groups bring back to the board what that evaluation process is going to be for engagement and expectations, and how that's going to be incorporated throughout next year, as in checkpoints along the way. Whether that's stakeholder.
Yeah.
Getting parent survey, getting student focus group, student surveys, what's the expectation of? How are we going to know that two weeks don't go by in a classroom? That's not agreeing, that is agreeing. And then the expectation is true to, to track that out and bring it back to the board.
Right, so Tim, I agree, we want to hear it, but I don't want us to sit there and pick it apart.
I agree. So we need to have something in place.
That's right, so we're going to, you're going to say not, I think you're not going to come to us with some ridiculous thing. So you're going to come, you're going to say, this is the way we're going to do it. We're going to say, okay, let's see how that works.
Sure.
Right? And that's the point. So again, we have to be careful, and this, us as a board in particular, tend to kind of step in where we shouldn't be. So, and I'm trying, no, no, no. So I'm trying not to be that person that's worse than I usually am. So what I'd like to see is just what you said, you know, you're going to come up with a plan, and you're going to say, look, you know, here's how we're going to evaluate this. And, you know, we may have some wondering about it, you know, we can ask the question, sure. But in general. No, no, I'm just, I'm just sort of wrong, but as a board, as a board in our case, we have tended to really dip into things sometimes. So, you know, and I think maybe it was good, maybe it got some of this conversation going, and I think that's great. But now that we're actually seeing you guys are really running with it, let's see what happens. You know, because we're at that point now, you don't need us to convince you, you need to make some changes. You're already, you're doing it. So not even this hour. And we're trying to create a process, how do we appraise our practice? And not just simply judge it. It's appraising and say, how can we improve and make it better? And what are those things we're falling short on, and what are those things we can get better at, and how are we going to do that? By doing that, it lessens the pressure, it lessens the judgment, and allows us to get, it allows us creative things to continue to go, and helps us fuel the process versus simply just going, all right, you know, here's where we are, but what does that mean? You know? And I think that's what we're trying to do, and that's going to take us time, because we're, you know, that's due to us too, for our staff, you know, to create these processes and those things. But I truly think, you know, and the group that I, the professional development group that I asked you, it was, I told Nick, I said, it was one of the most fantastic things I've seen since I've been at work at high school, just the conversations they were having about teaching and learning and kids. And it was about how do we design this to think about all of our staff, and how about what our kids are going to respond to? It was amazing, what they created was fantastic. It's really teachers doing great work, and how do we continue to foster that? We need to think of a few amount of some failures. We've got many, you know, some failures, and you've got to learn from them, just as kids to try it.
And raise themselves.
So right, so a lot of the lessons we've learned in school or any kind of an educational process, whereas when we screwed up.
Yep.
And we didn't do it right. So the next round around, we said, we're going to do that. So actually, here's a plan to correct it.
Be open to say it's okay.
Yeah, so we don't want to make that a teacher field, or a group field, or a principal field, that, you know, you've got to try something different, and hey, it didn't work. Okay, it didn't work. You know, so now you're going to try something else. And we wouldn't want you to keep trying the same thing. So, so I think, yeah, and it worked. And so I think, and that's true for students, that's true for teachers, it's true for all professionals, is that you usually learn more from your errors than from what you do right. So, you know, those are the lessons that really stick with you, you know, when you made a mistake.
Yeah.
So, you know, and I think, you know, we need to foster that culture. Because I think it's sound teachers, because it's just one of the things we've done in the past. You know, that all the way, if I clean this up, this may not, this is a problem for me, you know? And I don't want them to feel it. So I say, well, you know, try something, you know? It's reasonable, be creative. And if it isn't exactly the way you planned, fine, modify it. So I mean, that's the way reading goes on. If it doesn't go on, I got all the facts now, and I'm going to chop them down, and, okay, I will. So, you know, that's exactly what we don't want to do. So, and I understand it's a little looser process, and maybe not every kid is, we try it perfectly today. I have to rein some of them in, and I get it. That's what these other time periods are for. So that's what retakes are for, if they're done correctly, which that's what we hear from, that's what I have to transfer than anything. Retakes are a bad problem. You guys, they're not really done in a worded fashion. So, you know, they're just peeing in a bunch of papers, just say, read these and take the test, but yeah, then a lot of times the test is almost the same. You don't learn anything when you do that. So, you know, that, if I hear any complaints from parents, that's the meaningful.
That's the biggest one I hear.
It's the biggest one I hear, that retake, the retake policy sucks, you know? So it's one of those things that, if we're going to have one, which I think makes sense, you know, you want to relearn the material you did learn correctly, we have to have a process for that, rather than just handing them a bunch of papers and saying, here, and how we get the test is almost the same. So that, and that's, that's a common, and if it's true or not, I'm not even going to say, because I don't have a kid in school anymore, I will say it's a perception, that's all.
Okay, so it's almost in, in spirit of efficiency, it's almost 11:40. So, can we, so wrap up here?
You're going to bring this to the board for?
Bring this to the board Monday. Okay.
Or consider it.
Right, well, no, for approval, because the sooner you get it done.
Yes, we need approval when they back.
We need it.
We need approval when they work.
Yeah, I agree, so are we as a committee in agreement on this?
I don't know. I can't.
Okay, well, you can.
As a group, to approve? Am I, are you asking if I would approve it right now?
Yeah.
Not. I need to learn more.
Okay, that's great, you and I can agree or disagree, if I'm wrong, that's fine. So, you know, that's okay, I'm just trying to figure out what would I learn by reviewing all this material, I think differently than what you've learned so far. So, and what plan am I going to come up with that's better?
I believe, I'm very appreciative of all the work that's been done, and everything's done. Perfectly.
Questions to help us? Yeah, well, you know, and again, you know, if we come up with a different decision at the time, you know, most.
David can't, David and his collective groups and all the teams can't put the plan in action without some approval.
Sure, understood.
So, and there could be pivots, because we have to start, we have to start somewhere.
The scheduling process has to, we have to start putting teachers in the slots and curating. But certainly, you know, we hope you get your support, and certainly, and I think the questions you're asking are very fair and valid, and they, you're continually making new thinking and process, and how do I? So before the meeting, Sean, I was going to say, if you have specific questions you want to answer, that make a difference in your decision, let's get that done before Monday night.
Of course. And I would like to be clear with the board that if this, if this schedule is voted down, then my recommendation is that we revert back to the original schedule for 2019, 2020, when we move forward.
Well, because you have to.
Our teacher, we want it back to Rachel's.
Revert back.
Like, we don't have time to go back and revamp and try to get a schedule. Our teacher leaving two weeks.
The infrastructure that requires us to do is a monthly, is a pretty long process, and we're working two worlds right now.
So we go back to pre-COVID schedule, yay, period, day. So, just so you know, that's what I'm recommending. So again, here or there, the board can vote whichever way you all decide. But fairness to David and his team and staff, who's in high school, we just have to.
And we can, as a board, individually, we can still have, we're supposed to have, like, we care, so we have concerns. And then we can have those concerns.
And that's why I'm bringing you up.
So the discussions never stop. But at some point, you do need to, to Dr. Schim's point, there are two weeks.
Totally agree, I agree 100%.
We have to move forward. Okay, and then any issue on any of the other schedules or questions or anything?
And that will open to any issue.
So the reading today, as we speak, the schedule meeting, to continue to finalize, as Dr. Baughman said, we are going to do a more detailed review of schedules next year. There's other districts, look at ways in which we can provide more, we can talk about coding at the elementary, second language opportunities, and more staff, we're going to be more in-depth with their script.
Not even non-traditional.
You know, it was really, at the board meeting, it was really wonderful to listen to Emily talk about her plot, the approach of those teams at that level, and see alignment as the team, you could. So you're starting to see alignment to the approach in elementary school and how it kind of feeds into the other groups. So that was much appreciated.
So, that doesn't mean?
Well, unless we want to talk about academic freedom.
The other thing I would like to talk about with that is, or at least begin, or next steps is, you know, with Dr. Burks, you guys bring up that a couple months ago at board meeting, we talked about getting a process going with our, with the YEA and the board administration. So is there someone or a group of people that might come together as a small working group?
Yeah, and so your team and Rachel, you know, whoever you think, maybe getting a working community together, your point about an inquiry class, that's what that is. You know, so creating these, so yeah, let's get a small working.
Is there a board contact or board liaison?
I am very, very familiar with it, but Sean knows academic freedom on the back of his hand.
Would you be willing to do that, Sean? Would you be okay, Sean, serves as our board liaison for this?
I think that'd be great.
And then Rachel and I and Nick and Sean can get together some point, what a process might look like?
Yeah.
And again, also providing clarity what it really is too, I think it's misinterpreted and things like that too, but yes.
And if you and Dr. Burks have any resources or, I'm sure you guys share them.
Yeah, there's authoritative, there's authoritative.
Yeah, but this is a funny point. That'd be great, okay, is that?
Yeah, that's great.
Cause you're actually. So maybe, Sean, if we can at least let Rachel and get to the next two weeks here.
Wait, yes, yes.
You know, she's gone to the line of maybe before.
Maybe to a museum.
I'm a facts river.
It's a goal, it's a goal of mine, but I'm sure I'll be here.
I don't, I don't think anything that we bring up in hack and everything is going to be like.
No. It is so, yeah, it is so in line, it's not controversial as I want. It's so in line with everything.
It's a matter of the accountability issues, but still being autonomous. And that, you know, things that involve that work, which I think is a great benefit to any faculty member at any level of education.
So Sean, I'll work with you to then coordinate dates and we will, Rachel will go with them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that is it.
Anything else? All right.
Do you have any information updates, Dr. Baughman? That was the only thing on the agenda, but. Um, we have a, just a variety of topics that are coming up on Monday in the board chat that was posted.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry.
Not the other one discussed, Dave, just move on.
I did, with Dr. Burks and I'll share with the rest of the board here. We have a student who was quarantined, muscles is an athlete, so the student now is missing some contests and practices and such. In conversation with a parent, they reached out requesting that we go with the CDC guidelines from a seven to 10-day quarantine versus what we currently view, which is a little bit longer. Currently, we are, we follow, we're kind of kind of helping our department align with. So we've reached out to our health department asking them if they would consider, we did talk to Dr. Catula. Dr. Catula would be okay following CDC as long as our health department is in alignment. Our health department, the lighting meeting on Monday to give us their decision on that. Current, so it asks me to reach out to the board, and we'd like the board to make a decision sooner than that, to change the guidelines. I know that's not, to be how we worked through this year with the board, where you guys really voted on anything, or you really allowed us to work with, if you, Dr. Catula or the health department, I would just ask that we continue to do that. We certainly, we respect the parents' recommendation, we're trying to benefit more than just their child, which is great. And the parents have been very supportive and, you know, very rational request. So just in case you hear something, please know that we are looking at, we hope that a decision will be made. And we'll get back to the parent.
As soon as we get the decision.
Yes.
Which, and maybe earlier, so I would.
Correct, exactly.
A good chance that we'd be able to.
That's it.
So we're done?
We'll pause.
Question, pause.
All of their eye.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.